I'll call the meeting of the Urbana Committee of the Whole to order. Kirk, please call the roll.
City Council members Ammons.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Hazen. Jacobson. Miller.
Here.
Roberts.
Here.
Wu.
Here.
Mayor Marlin.
Here.
First is approval of minutes of the previous meeting from August 27th. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Jared, seconded by Aaron. Any corrections or discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Next we have additions to the agenda. Mayor, do you have an addition?
Like to read a proclamation.
Okay. We need to vote on that? Vote to add the proclamation to the agenda?
Public input.
We'll just have a proclamation.
Okay. This is a proclamation by the mayors of the cities of Champaign and Urbana. Whereas, in 1970, lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender pride LGBT events began in the United States and have since spread throughout the world. And whereas, since the late 1970s, Champaign County residents have celebrated LGBTQ pride every year. And whereas, in 1975, Urbana became the first city in Illinois to prohibit discrimination on the basis of sexual orientation, followed by Champaign in 1977. And whereas, in 1977, Champaign was the second city in the nation to prohibit discrimination on the basis of gender identity, followed by Urbana in 1979. And whereas, both Parkland College and the University of Illinois began providing protections for LGBTQ persons before they were mandated by Illinois state law in 2005. And whereas, on February 26, 2014, Champaign County became the first in Illinois to voluntarily begin issuing marriage licenses to same-sex couples. And whereas, the cities of Champaign and Urbana have a rich and diverse history of LGBTQ representation in our government leaders, staff, and citizens. And whereas, on September 14 through 16, 2018, Champaign-Urbana's 9th Annual Pride Fest and Parade will be held in downtown Champaign. Now, therefore we, Deborah Frank Finan, Mayor of the City of Champaign, Illinois, and Diane Wolf-Marlin, Mayor of the City of Urbana, Illinois, do hereby proclaim the week of September 10 through 16, 2018, as Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, Transgender, Queer, and Questioning Pride Week in the cities of Champaign and Urbana, Illinois.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Next we have public input. I have a couple of cards. One, we'll wait until the item comes up. The other is from Reverend Dr. Evelyn B. Underwood. Topic goes, "Dr. Ellis Subdivision Sewer Problems." And she wants to remind us that they are continually concerned about the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer problems. The other is, another is from Elders Melinda Carr. Does not wish to address the council that has continued concerns about Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer issues, equity, and historic impact. Thank you. Is there any other public input at this time? Okay. If not, next we have presentations. Are there any presentations today? Staff report? We have a business staff report?
Libby Horowitz, Economic Development Coordinator. A few updates for you tonight. The biggest announcement is that the city has expanded the business grants program to include the Philo Road Business District. So that's in concert with the 2018 City Council and Mayor Priority Number 6, to make Southeast Urbana an economic priority. So in fiscal year 18, there will be up to five $1,000 opening grants available, and those will follow the same rules that the downtown TIF opening grants follow. So those are available for new and expanding businesses, including retail stores, restaurants, creative industries, or any minority or female-owned business. If you want more information on that program, please go to urbanaillinois.us/incentives. In new development, 809 West Nevada was completed by Green Street Realty. That's the construction of a new brick apartment building at Lincoln and Nevada. It was a $3.5 million project, and it consists of a three-story, 18-unit building with three-bed, three-bath units. Also, in new businesses, The Place for Children with Autism has opened in Lincoln Square Mall. That's 5,000 square feet in there, and that's the former Health Alliance space. The center will offer applied behavior analysis therapy for children age 2 to 6 on the autism spectrum. The center plans to begin with 12 children with opportunities for later expansion. As reported in last month's report, the auction of the Landmark Hotel will go back on auction on September 11 and run through September 13. In events, Urbana Art Expo is this weekend. I'd encourage everybody to attend. It's a juried art exhibition with plenty of artists to choose from, and you can check out and support local art. Other events, there is Open Scene Open Mic. There's a few of those coming up, so stay tuned for those. Urbana First Fridays will be September 7. That was September 7. I apologize. And the Landis-Farm Neighborhood Tour, that's part of our Realtor Tours for Think Urbana, is coming up this Thursday from 3 to 5. And it's going to start at 2510 Fairfield, and snacks and drinks will follow at Toro Loco. Not on here, but the Business and Development Luncheon will be on the 18th from noon till 1:30, and that is in joint with Champaign, and the theme is connecting our communities. If you would like more information, please contact the Economic Development Division. Following up, on December 3 to 5, the Illinois Enterprise Zone Association Fall Conference will actually be hosted in Urbana-Champaign, so that we are again continuing the combining and connecting our cities theme. That's really what I have. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Libby? Dennis?
You just perhaps didn't mention that the location of the art expo is going to be the Civic Center.
Yes, that is, the Civic Center. Thank you.
I had one question, Libby. The new grants for Philo Road, it's interesting that it's the same criteria as the TIF. I just wondered if you considered whether our goals on the Philo Road District are the same as our downtown goals with the TIF?
I can look into that. I know the criteria was really kept the same to make it an easy application process and make sure that those things are still reflecting of council goals.
Okay. And it's a relatively small amount, $1,000 per business. And then, on the business openings, like if there's a coworking space, I know sometimes a new lease within the coworking space will open a business and rent a desk, or rent a room in the coworking space. But I didn't notice before, I didn't realize before, you said that receipts for building improvements have to be greater than the grant amount. So does that mean that those people that are renting those coworking spaces would have to somehow spend $1,000 on building improvements?
So those are mostly done as pass-throughs, so it just means that that has to be spent on the building. So we have receipts of that money was spent on the building.
Even though the people getting the grants aren't the ones spending the money?
Correct. That's in agreement with the building owner.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Okay, next is ordinance, oh, yeah, that's it. Any other staff reports? Okay. Next is ordinance number 2018-09-058. An ordinance approving an annexation agreement, a real estate parcel with permanent index number 30-21-06-326-015, Judy Heimberger Trust and Trinatus Development LLC.
Good evening. If it pleases the committee, I would like to present on the items 7, 8, and 9 all at once, since they're all related. Is that, I don't know if, I don't know if a motion is needed.
Any objections?
No.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay. All right. So these related cases are part of a series of approvals that are needed to allow the applicant, Trinatus Development LLC, to develop 40 acres into a development with duplexes and townhouses. This site, as you can see on Exhibit A on your screens or in your memos, the site is located north of Bradley Avenue, east of Oak Street, and south of Federal Drive. So this is an interesting site there. We've broken it up into three sites, A, B, and C, just for ease of presentation. So Site C, I'll start with first. That site is in Champaign, and that site is subject to a rezoning request to go from single-family to multifamily in Champaign. The Plan Commission heard that case last week and unanimously recommended approval of the rezoning to the Champaign City Council, and they also approved a preliminary plat for the entire site. Site B, on the north there, is currently in the county. It is currently zoned I-2, which is heavy industrial, and that's subject to both the annexation, or it's subject to the annexation agreement request, that's before you, also the annexation petition, which will, which would follow up after that. The annexation agreement includes rezoning from that industrial zone to R4, to City R4, which is medium-density, multiple-family residential. And then finally, Site A on the east is currently in Urbana, and that's subject to a rezoning request. It's currently zoned R3, which is single and two-family residential, and the request is to rezone that to R4 as well. Last Thursday, the Plan Commission heard these cases, and they unanimously voted to recommend approval of the annexation agreement and the rezoning. They also unanimously voted to approve the preliminary plat. At that meeting, there was one Champaign resident that came and spoke against the proposal, and she was concerned about traffic and then also the proximity of the development to her home. So for a little background on the site, this has been farmland for as far back as city records go. The overall plan would be to develop, it would be to develop the entire site, I believe, in phases, first with the Champaign side, then with the Urbana side. And in total, there'd be 406 units, as currently planned, with about 120 units on Site B and also about 120 units on Site A, and that would be a mix of duplex units, which would be further to the south, so closer to the existing neighborhood, and then townhouses on the north, the north side of the site. Currently surrounding the site, so this, so the site is kind of sandwiched between sort of an industrial and commercial area to the north, and then a neighbor, a couple of neighborhoods to the south. So you'll see, there's the Church of the Living God in the southwest corner of the map, and then to the east is Douglas Square, which is a townhouse development, and then Carver Park subdivision is, or Carver Park neighborhood is the, is the single-family home area south of the site. And then there's also the Pilgrim Baptist Church there in the middle. To the northeast, you'll see commercial industrial areas, and then also some other commercial and industrial areas to the north, and then there is one single-family home tucked sort of on Oak Street there on the west side of the site. Just for a little more context, here's an oblique view looking northeast. So you'll see it's pretty close to I-74. You can see Lincoln Avenue off in sort of the upper-right part of this image. And you'll see where it is located with respect to Bradley and Oak Street. It's just under two miles from campus and from Campus Town, which I think is attractive to the developer. So this is looking southwest. Zoning-wise, as I mentioned, Site B on the north is currently zoned industrial and is subject to the annexation agreement with the rezoning to R4. Site A on the east is R3, request to be rezoned to R4. And then again, the Champaign, Site C, is also under a rezoning request to multifamily. You'll see the surrounding area, as I mentioned, so to the north, it's industrial, and then sort of in all other directions, it's a mix of multifamily and then single-family type So the, when we look at rezoning requests, we look to our comp plan. Site B, so the northern site, isn't actually in the comp plan in the future land use maps, because that was, I suppose, in the county, and it wasn't really considered as part of those maps. Site A on the east there is labeled as institutional, and that's an artifact of a special use permit that had been granted to the Church of the Living God to locate their church there. But as I pointed out earlier, Church of the Living God is now down here at the corner of Bradley Avenue and Oak Street. So the prospects for having Site A as an institutional use, as pointed out in the comp plan, are probably minimal. Otherwise, the proposal to develop this site as duplexes and townhouse units meets many of the goals and objectives of the comp plan, and I won't go into all those here, but they are in the staff memo. With respect to the annexation agreement and the petition, both of those documents are pretty standard. We have a standard format that we use for those. And as I mentioned, the agreement does include rezoning from county I-2 to city R4. When we do annexation agreements, we do a basic fiscal impact analysis, and we have determined that the fiscal impacts are expected to be positive for the city of the annexation. Rezoning both Sites A and B to medium-density, multiple-family residential would be necessary to accommodate the proposed development. And with respect to the criteria that we use to evaluate rezoning requests, we feel that the proposal meets those criteria for the reasons outlined in the staff memo. I'd be happy to discuss those in more detail, if you'd like. Did want to point out that the developer held two public outreach meetings while they were creating the development proposal. They held these meetings at the Church of the Living God, and a small number of people from the surrounding neighborhood attended each of these meetings, and they were generally supportive of the proposal. So for these cases before you tonight, council should evaluate the rezoning requests based on the rezoning criteria. They should evaluate the annexation agreement, and then either approve or deny the requests. Again, Plan Commission unanimously recommended approval of these requests, and staff concurs with that recommendation. That concludes my report, and I'd be happy to take questions.
Any questions for Kevin?
Kevin, I haven't seen the, the results of the, the, the meeting with the, okay, I'm trying to think of, yeah, the Planning Commission. Were there suggestions concerning buffering of the neighborhood to the south that were made and had, were they adopted?
Well, in, so in rezoning cases, there aren't recommendations that can be made for things like buffering. But if rezoned, the properties would have to comply with our, with our buffering requirements. So there would have to be at least a 10-foot buffer yard and landscaping required to buffer, to buffer the development from the neighborhoods to the south.
Is it possible to increase that space, to make it larger so that there's less impact on the neighborhood below?
I think you could ask that of the developer. I'm not sure that you'd be able to make a condition. Seems like Lori is coming over to.
Lori Pearson.
Kevin's correct. It is not permissible to place conditions upon a rezoning.
Okay. It wasn't clear to me, the vehicle access into the, into the new development. Can you explain what that would be? And would it go through the residential neighborhood at all?
So I can explain that. Again, I don't think that's, or I don't think that's germane to the rezoning request. But the, so the proposal would be, the main access would be on the, on the west side, so the proposal is to extend Fourth Street up this way. There would be two access, access points coming in from the west, and there'd also be a connection at Fifth Street here, a connection at Carver Drive over here, and then a connection to Federal Drive.
Excuse me.
Thank you.
Yeah, Aaron?
Kevin, could you go back to the actual slide where you had the diagram of the proposed development, and it had like some little blue dots showing the direction of traffic flow? I think it's just a slide or two back.
I'm not, I don't think I have that on this presentation, because that was part of, so the Plan Commission, and I apologize for not mentioning this, the Plan Commission approved the preliminary plat for this site. And as part of the preliminary plat, one thing they look at is access. So that slide was on my presentation for Plan Commission, but that's not germane to this, to the proposals tonight.
There's something I saw on the slide that I'd like to see if you could go back, please.
Yeah. Are you talking about this one? Oh, okay. Sorry.
Clearly, it looks as though the dotted lines on the right are to suggest pathways for them to travel, for students or whoever to travel back to campus. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think, and I included those because I think the, that, those are the most direct paths to campus, and I think the developer plans to have, a lot of the people who are living here would have a connection to campus. So for instance, coming down, I think that's Carver Drive right here, you wouldn't expect people to come out Carver Drive, maybe, and then go over and, and hop on the street down there. But they might. I was just trying to illustrate the most direct routes to campus. So that's what this slide is showing.
Well, it appears to me, from knowing the location, where the Church of the Living God is, if that's what I'm looking at with the red, no, no, it's over.
Yeah, it's here.
To the right. Okay, so I see Fourth Street. That's Pilgrim. So Fourth Street and then Fifth Street would be the avenues in which you're suggesting they would travel.
Yeah, so Fourth and then Fifth.
And they would come out of Carver Park, or come in through Carver Park?
There would, yeah, there would be a connection, I think this is the Carver Drive. Let me go back here. So yeah, the Carver Drive connection would be right there.
Are you finished?
Yeah, for now.
Okay. Mary Alice.
For Site A, how many, if it is rezoned and replatted, how many units are allowed there? So how many cars can we expect to be going through Site A?
I'm not sure off the top of my head. I haven't done a maximum density analysis of that site. I know what's proposed is honored 22 units.
Did you say 122 units?
122, yeah. Or maybe it's 120.
If I remember correctly.
It's about the same between the two.
Around Site B, so Site A and Site, I'm just thinking about the Planning Commission meeting. Site A and Site B was going to have retention ponds in the middle of it. Is that correct?
Yes.
And then the clubhouse would be right around Site C? I don't know, it's on the borderline.
About where the E is, maybe, in Site.
Yeah, yeah. I guess my concern is this. I think that it makes sense to extend, what, Fourth and Fifth is the main access point, but you're going to have people who are going to be driving down Carver Street accessing the places that are in Site A. So I would really like to know how many actually are going to be built there, so that we can have a better estimate of the number of cars that are going to be going through there. I would just like to bring up to, well, that's part of discussion, so let me save the discussion part. The public hearing that you mentioned, so at least the comments that we've gotten so far have all been concerned. I know that there was one person who came to the public hearing for the Plan Commission, which they were concerned about, the location where their children play, which impacts traffic there. So I'm wondering if you could speak a little bit to the neighborhood meeting, so I could understand exactly what they discussed, the neighborhood?
So I was not at both neighborhood meetings, and I think, the developer is here, and I think I'd be more comfortable letting them speak to what they heard there. Yeah.
Okay. And, well, I'll pass. I'll let other people ask a couple of questions.
Jared?
Kevin, I just wanted to ask a question of process, because we're just doing zoning approval, but we're going to see the development again in full, you know, in its full glory for approval again later on down the line, right?
Well, the, so the Plan Commission has approved the preliminary plat. The final plat would come before the City Council. However, as long as that final plat meets the requirements of the state, I believe it must be approved. So I don't know that there would be a room for further discussion.
So this is our only chance to look at this development?
I believe so.
That council will have the opportunity to speak and have its say in it, right?
Unless, I'll just add to that, unless there are any waivers requested, which they may find they need throughout the final engineering process, but otherwise, if it meets all of our rules and regulations, then it is standard building permit process.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh, go ahead. Mary Alice.
Can I answer to your other question? Okay, so I, this is just out of curiosity. So the estimate of the taxing value of the land would be $1.5 million, which seems kind of low to me, considering the business people just said that the Nevada place was estimated $3.5 million. Is that, that's the construction cost, not the?
I think the $3.5 million is typically the construction cost that doesn't necessarily equal what the land value is later, we have found.
Okay. And then my, my second follow-up question to that is, I was kind of surprised that $10,000 to $13,000 per year are estimated for police and fire services. I'm assuming on behalf of the city of Urbana, because there's only like one-third of this site. Is that correct?
Correct. And those estimates, I'll say, are conservative, and they are also just, just for Site B, because that's the only.
Site A.
Site B.
Site B is the, yeah, is the site that's subject to the annexation agreement.
Fiscal impact isn't part of the criteria that we can take into account for rezonings specifically. So we put that in there only for annexations, to, so that the City Council can decide whether or not they want to annex a particular parcel, and as a part of that, they can consider the fiscal impact. Whereas for a rezoning, you are really constrained to look at the LaSalle criteria.
So are we discussing all three, or are we going through these one by one? Because I think annexation's on here, right? Am I incorrect?
Kevin presented on all of them, because the sites are so interconnected.
Sure, sure. Okay, so can I comment on the annexation, then, since we're presenting on it? Okay. All right.
If there's questions right now. We do have one, one public input before we start discussion, but if there's any other questions, we should get those out now.
Okay. All right. I, I'm kind of confused. If I look at the map, in terms of the city of Champaign, so let me find out where exactly this was listed. There was one map that showed on Site A is Urbana, but just below Site A is not Urbana? I'm very confused by that.
It's a very confusing, yes, it's very confusing. So, let's see, if you can, so this dotted line on here is not very discernible anywhere, even on the screen in front of me. But this is, so, so Site B here is in the county. This is Champaign down. This is Champaign down here. Okay, still Champaign on the west side of this line. Then Champaign comes out east along here, down here, over here.
Is it the black line, so yellow line?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and then around this church that's over here. And then half of the street is in Champaign, and then the rest of this is Urbana, coming up here. And then this is all Urbana, and then there's some county up here, just for good measure.
So the annexation, can you point on this map where the annexation is proposed?
So what, what is identified as Site B and then bounded by the yellow, and then in some instances, yellow with the black dashed line. This Site B is subject to the annexation agreement.
So we would be surrounding Champaign?
No, it would be, and this actually goes back, back in 1990. The cities entered into a, a boundary agreement. And at that time, they said this was the dividing line, I guess, of, of that boundary agreement. And everything north would go to Urbana, which kinda makes sense because there are, like, this piece is in Urbana. And this stuff up here is in Urbana, but it's still confusing.
So the 1990 agreement is the reason why this is proposed to be annexed to Urbana, not Champaign?
Correct, yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Okay, I had a few questions. So on this slide, at the bottom of Site A, that section that's gonna be kinda isolated without any road access, that's in the, between the yellow square, this yellow corner and the black corner, there's, looks like two or three lots in there. That's not part of this development?
So the, yeah, so this piece right here.
Yeah, that.
Yeah, that, I wish I could remember the details. This was an odd, I think that was an odd subdivision that we did a couple of years back. But, but you're correct, that would not be, if memory serves, that is sort of an outlot that is owned by the folks to the west, which I think is habitat for humanity. But don't quote me on that.
I think the section, those two little squares right behind it probably are, but the other one, I think, is owned by the same property owner that's selling the property. But that's not part of the development?
It is not.
Okay. I just wonder how that would work later, if they wanna use that. They'd have to have some kind of easement to get to a street, right?
Yeah, and I'd have to look at the details of that case. That was confusing, not as confusing as this, but.
Then in the annexation agreement itself, on item one, the property, the last sentence says Exhibit C is the general area plan showing the developer's intended use of the property. I don't think we have that. And then at the end of the agreement, it says the attachments are Exhibit A and Exhibit B, but there's no listing of Exhibit C.
Yeah, that's, um, that's generally something that we, yeah, I see what you're talking about. That is generally something that we include, and I suppose we could ask for that as part of the approval.
Okay, then.
But yeah, that's not.
We can get that before the next meeting, I guess.
Yes.
I guess I, I would dispute your contention that the main route would be Fourth Street and Fifth Street. That'd only be true if you're going to campus town. But as someone who went to the university, I went to class more often than I went to campus town. So I think if I was going from the development to class, especially if it was the north campus, I would probably go take, uh, Carver Drive down to Goodwin and then ride my bike down Goodwin, or down to John Bradley to Goodwin, and then go straight down Goodwin. And I'd probably be a lot closer to get to the engineering campus, a lot safer. So I think there's, there's a couple other routes besides those two. I also do think that the estimate for fire and police is really low. I did a rough estimate of what we spend currently per capita on fire and police. It's over $200. And that was just kinda guessing on the total amount. I forget, maybe Elizabeth isn't here, but we could calculate that, but the, it seemed like it's about four or five times off. So I think we'd be spending a lot more on fire than police than $10,000 or $13,000 even for that one property because that's gonna have 120 units with probably, what, 300 or 400 people. So the per capita would come out probably, well, I know we don't take in as much property tax. Our property tax barely covers the pension payments, let alone the cost of police and fire. So I don't think that's gonna be a, a strong selling point. Although having the population is always good. You know, we get some state money based on per capita. There's more people to support businesses. There may be more business development that would provide services to this neighborhood if there were more businesses in the area, if there was someplace to put businesses in the area. So I guess I, I would question that figure. I know we're not in discussion yet. I kinda forgot. We're not in discussion yet, sorry. I think that was it for my questions. Okay, any other questions?
Yes.
Yeah, Aaron.
So this has been a, a learning process ever since I've come to the council to understand why do we have the proposed development or any understanding about the development if it has no bearing on the decision that we make tonight?
Well, I, I think it does. The, the request for the rezoning is so that they can produce the development that, that they're proposing. So really what they're asking for is just a certain level of density that we would allow, to allow them to do what they're proposing. And the developers here, so they can speak to, to the plans that they have more than I.
But it sounds as if the annexation, the three different points that we own, the three different pieces that we're addressing, the LaSalle criteria and the various different things, we just simply have to follow those and that's about it for us. That's the way it's presented. Is that correct?
Well, I will add to that because the general area plan is typically a part of the annexation agreement. There's a, a bit more latitude on that one because that is an agreement. The annexation agreement is an agreement between the city and the parties. So there's more flexibility there than if we were just discussing a straight rezoning. So for Site A, that's just a straight rezoning where you are constrained by the LaSalle criteria. Site B, on the other hand, is subject to an annexation agreement. So there's the ability to discuss beyond the LaSalle criteria, unless of course you're discussing just whether or not it should be zoned R4. And I can get some legal assistance if I'm botching that too much, but it is difficult, I understand. Site A, however, is just a straight rezoning. So you are limited to the LaSalle criteria in terms of your discussion points there.
So the annexation, the Site B belongs to the county. But because of an agreement we did in 1990, we make the decision on whether or not we annex this?
Well, it's privately owned. However, currently it's in the jurisdiction of the county. But yes, subject to the 1990 boundary agreement, that section is designed to be a part of Urbana upon annexation. So yes.
So Urbana would be behind Champaign when it's up. It's very interesting. Okay, that's all I have for now.
Okay. Um, I think we're ready for the public input now. Is that okay with everyone? Okay, so we have Kimberly Hansen. Are you with the developer? Are you with the developer?
Yes.
Oh, okay. It wasn't clear. Thank you.
Yes. All right, so, are we ready? Oh, oh wait. Okay. So hi, I'm Kimberly Hansen, and I'm excited to be here tonight on behalf of Trinitas to give you an introduction to our proposed development, which is Union Gardens. And that is a play on words with the fact that the site is a union between Champaign and Urbana. So some of this information will be repeated since Kevin did such a great job, but that's good. First, I wanna give you a little bit of background on the company I'm representing. Trinitas is a 30-year-old company based in Lafayette, Indiana. That's near Purdue University. We specialize in multifamily development. So we design and construct our properties to be managed by our internal property management company. And we take time to design and build projects that we can maintain in our portfolio. We pride ourselves on the quality of our projects in both appearance and operations. Throughout this presentation, there are pictures of actual developments that we have so you can get an idea. So our team includes experienced professionals, both within and external to our organization. I have a number of my colleagues here with me today. Again, I'm Kimberly Hansen, manager of design and development with Trinitas. Jeff Knavil, project executive, and Alex Sanders, manager of development acquisitions and finance, are also here with Trinitas. Jake Wolf, who is a civil engineer with Engineering Resource Associates. They are providing the civil engineering work on this development. And Jeremy Chapman, our traffic engineer from Structure Point, are also here and can answer questions. So this will be a little bit of review, but our location, our official address is gonna be 1402 North Fourth Street. Again, outlined in red, that would be Champaign. We are focused on the green tonight with the county parcel to the north, Urbana to the right. So why are we here? We are seeking approval of the following. This is the same diagram you saw previously. Approval of rezon of Site A from R3 to R4. And approval of annexation and rezon of Site B from I2 to R4. So now I'd like to tell you a little bit about our proposed development. You can see a conceptual site plan there, and that will help illustrate what I am referring to. In total, we're going to have 40.6 acres. We are proposing 406 units, which comes to 10 units an acre that will be equally dispersed. There is going to be more than 13 acres of green space. We are doing duplexes and townhomes. Our target demographic would be 20 to 30-year-olds. There'll be a mix of one to four bedroom units, ample parking, and the site benefits from being close to existing transit lines. We will be constructing this in two phases. Right now, the first phase actually does involve building both in Champaign and Urbana. We will have a clubhouse with luxury amenities, including a pool, volleyball court, and basketball court. Throughout the design process, there's been a focus on connectivity to the existing community. So we'll have sidewalks throughout, and we wanted to make sure our design complements existing neighborhood characters so we have front porches and rear yards. Throughout our design process, we have worked with city staff in both municipalities, the Church of the Living God, and neighbors to design the project and the Fourth Street extension, which will serve as the main access point into the development. So we took a look with, at the comprehensive plan, and we do believe our development is consistent with goals. It encourages compact contiguous and sustainable growth patterns, enhances the existing community, promotes infill development, increases a diverse housing supply in the area, promotes a broad tax base, and we think the site is well-suited for the proposed use. In addition, rezoning of parcels would likely have little impact on neighboring property values. So again, just to touch on access to the site, illustrated there is the four main access points. You can see Fourth Street, Fifth Street, Carver Drive. And I did wanna say that we have been working with the Champaign Planning Department. Originally, we had considered that as emergency access only. After meeting with the emergency service departments in both municipalities, Champaign has requested that that be a full access point at this time. In addition, we will have connection to Federal Drive to the north. So the next few slides will give you an idea of what this development is gonna look like. We have a similar development in Oxford, Ohio, so a lot of these pictures come from there. This is what our duplexes look like. This is an aerial of that similar development in Oxford, Ohio. You can see the duplexes to the front, townhomes to the back. This is another view of that. It shows how we're going for a neighborhood feel. And this is what our townhomes look like. As mentioned, there'll be a clubhouse with modern amenities. We will be using a similar clubhouse as well. Shown here, we have a pool, gym, as well as pictures of the main gathering areas. In addition, at Trinitas, we take property management operations seriously. We have a residence life program with a purposeful focus on community academics and socialization. We have both a full-time maintenance and full-time office staff. We operate property shuttles to and from university campus and local points of interest. And we will have an onsite courtesy officer to patrol the community and respond to any calls after hours. And as mentioned, we did hold two community open houses at the Church of the Living God right by the site. Those were April 3rd and August 6th. It provided us an opportunity to speak with neighborhood residents about the conceptual plan and solicit feedback. Approximately six community members attended each meeting. And some of the feedback we received is that there's a need for additional housing in the area. There was a positive response to the design of duplexes and townhomes, and a strong interest in the extension of Fourth Street. Lastly, I did want to draw your attention to an outreach platform for community engagement in the development process called Co-Urbannize that we have been utilizing. You can either go to that URL below or co-urbanize.com, log in and search for Union Gardens. This website allows us to provide information of where we are in the process, when we're gonna have public meetings, or we're gonna be out in the community. And it allows anyone interested to leave comments or questions for us that we can respond to much more easily than just in a public forum. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Any questions for Kimberly? Yep, Aaron.
So thank you for the presentation.
Sure.
What sort of research does Trinitas do, or has it done, on the surrounding area? What do you know about the area that you're going to be surrounding?
Do you mean the immediate neighborhood?
Yes.
So I, other than just giving the stats in the area, I do know that it's a traditionally African-American community. I'm aware that there is a townhome community directly to the south. We're trying to make sure that our design is contiguous with how that is designed so that that feels continued. That's called Douglas Square. And then beyond that, we've just done market research related to making sure, making sure we wanna be in the area.
So you don't know much about the community at all, really?
What specifically?
Well, you, you did say that it's a historical African-American neighborhood.
Correct.
But if you said that, so when you guys were sharing the information about the upcoming meetings on April 3rd and things, how did you distribute that information to make sure the residents got it?
So we did send out postcards to everyone in the area, both times.
So you mailed to everyone in the area?
Correct.
And so in those comments, the six people showed up combined, or is that?
Those combined. We just had six, each one, approximately.
The onsite courtesy officer, is that a police officer?
Correct.
And that's for what reason, again, you said?
It's just to provide additional safety and help with calls after hours when they may be needed. They patrol the community.
Why wouldn't the Champaign Police Department be responsible for that?
Um, I'm sure, I'm sure that they would be responsible if there was a police call. I think it's just to enhance safety in the community.
Is this intended to be any sort of gated community?
No.
Will people with backgrounds of felony convictions be allowed to live in that, in the proposed development?
I do not know our specific leasing criteria, but I can look into it for next week.
Someone shaking their head no over there.
Okay. Okay, great.
Would you please come?
Hi, my name is Jeff Knave. I'm also with Trinitas Development. Our standard process for qualifying future prospective tenants for this would require them to pass a background and criminal background screen. And so to the extent they would not be able to pass that background screen, then they would not meet the qualifications.
So I, I definitely appreciate, as my colleague said, that we want more people. We want, you know, good development. But as my constituent in Ward Three, which is the area which part of the Site A would be in, is my ward, we're very concerned about what the future developments look like and if they really take into consideration the historical impact. if they really take into consideration the historical impact or the history of the area. And given the concern about housing that we have here in Champaign County, to deny people with felony convictions an opportunity to have housing is a non-starter for me. So, there's no way I would vote for something like this if you tell me you're not going to allow people with concerns or with issues in their backgrounds to have access to housing, especially into the area in which you, the two areas in which you're going to primarily have access to, which are actually CC1 and CN1, City of Champaign One and Cunningham One, are the most predominantly African-American neighborhoods with the highest number of people with felony convictions. So, I don't see how you can say that you're going to expand housing if you're denying it to such a considerable population. So, I have grave concerns about that if that's your process.
I will take it upon my responsibility to find out for sure, for certain, what our criteria is exactly, and get that information back to you.
You may also want to contact our human relations officer and have him go over our human relations ordinance.
Okay, absolutely.
That's all I have for now.
Aaron. Sorry.
What, Dean? Jared.
I just had a question. If you could, you were, anybody else involved in the project could speak to how you landed on this as your prime location in Urbana for choosing this development, Champaign and Urbana.
I have the expert with me.
Hello, everyone. My name is Alex Sanders, manager of development acquisitions and finance. I'm the one who located the site. We, Trinitas actually had a project in Champaign that we've held for approximately 10 years. And it's a boy, Illinois, which is south of Champaign. We liked the market. Like I said, we had the project for 10 years, so we knew this is somewhere we wanted to be. We're familiar with the community. So, the next thing was, hey, let's find a site that could actually fit the type of project that we will want. It's not too many places in any cities, whether it be Champaign, Urbana, or in Chicago, Indianapolis, anywhere, where you're able to find 40 acres within city limits. So, once we found that, it's like, okay, hey, this is the type of project that we want to build. No, we don't want to build a tower in this area. No, we don't want to build a mid-rise. We want to do something that fits the actual community. So, we decided to go with the cottage product, the townhome product, to give people a chance who may not want to live or can afford to live in some of the high-rises or mid-rises across the city. So, we wanted to give them another affordable, nice, large living area space for them to live in, and 40 acres was the way we were able to do that.
I'm sorry.
Could I? Jared, go ahead.
So, your primary considerations were simply the contiguous area and not so much where it was?
Well, yeah.
Just the fact that you found 40 acres as close as you possibly could campus?
Not necessarily that, but if we were to go, you still want to be around where a majority of people are. So, for the type of project we wanted to build, we knew that we didn't want to be in that area, whether it be price or just because of the type of building we wanted to build. So, when we started looking at locations, that's something that just popped up to us. And again, because of the way that the site laid out and because of the area that was in, where it's near, is near campus, so you're able to focus on not only young professional students, but also the professors and teachers and anybody else that works in that area. It's easy for them to get to campus, but it's also easy for them to get to areas like downtown and anywhere else. So, that was, it also has two access points through the highway, so it was perfect for us.
It's just, I just find it interesting. I mean, if you had came and surveyed students here, I think you would have found out that most students don't realize that anything exists in this town, north of University Avenue, much less five or six blocks north of University Avenue. So, the first, when I saw this last week coming to us, and I looked at where it was, I was just like, and this is supposed to be student housing? Like, I mean, you are like miles away from where those students normally are and where they, I mean, you're not a literal miles, but in their world, it's, that's a long way to go. So, I was curious because there's also not any shops around there. There's nothing. I mean, if you're living in this place as a student, you're like, you are isolated in that neighborhood because there's nothing else around you. You're going to go to Tabman's Towing and get your, get your car that you left parked on campus? Maybe, because it's right around the corner, but, you know, there's just not, there's nothing, there's nowhere for you to go.
And again, we're not focused solely on students. We're focused on other affordable options for young professionals as well. Again, she said our ages were 20, 30 years old. And to your point, we actually have another project that we own. We just sold a year ago that we held for 10 years. That was three miles south of campus, and we had the same type of demographic that we're shooting for now. So, like you say, yeah, maybe students won't realize it, but that's not the only demographic we're going to. And like our last project, we had all types of, different type of demographics for that project. So, we're pretty familiar with who we're shooting for, at least for this site, where we have an idea of what we want.
I will say that we do have a pretty rigorous market research department that works on this, and I can assure you we wouldn't be here if we did not believe that this would be successful.
I'm sure I seated some more thoughts. I'll let other council members go.
Mary Ellis.
So, I'm wondering, you had briefly mentioned where the emergency access was. I was wondering if you could show that to me again?
Okay, so we, these are all right now, open access points. Carver Drive just had come up in discussion. So, I did want to mention that Champaign Planning Department at this time has asked for that to be a full access point, and that was a conclusion, Carver. That was a conclusion that came out of discussions where the fire department requested that to be open access.
Okay, so, does that mean that the fire trucks could come in any of those? Is that what you're talking about?
Correct.
Okay, all right. And then, can you answer the question in terms of, was it Site A? Is that right? What, how many units do you expect to have on Site A?
I apologize. I only have in front of me how many units total will be in Urbana versus Champaign. I can get that for next week.
So, Urbana would be Site C and Site A, is that right?
C is Champaign, so it'd be B and A.
B and A.
And there will be 246 units. Champaign would have 160.
All right. And last but not least, you had talked a little bit about the cost. I'm wondering if you have an idea or a range of how much these are going to rent for?
So, we don't have exact prices of what we're going to rent it for, just because it'd be two years out. But we are looking to, we're looking to at least a $200 to $300 discount to what people are paying near the downtown area of.
So, right now, the going rate, 740, 750 a bedroom, roughly? That's right on the heart of campus. So, are you talking 550 a bedroom, roughly?
Well, if you look into the campus, depending on what type of bedroom is and what they offer, a lot of times our, our stuff offer not only utilities, but they also come fully furnished. So, we kind of throw all that into the price when we do have it. But again, I can't give you an exact idea what the price is. I think one bedrooms are, right now, are going for, I think roughly $1,300 downtown, not exact numbers.
Downtown here?
Down, well, near campus area.
All right.
But that ranges from $800 to that $1,300 range, and we will be below what that range is. But again, ours include utilities, furnishing, and other things of that nature that does add into the price.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Aaron?
So, when you, you used the term affordable, right? And then, affordable for the young professionals?
Mm-hmm.
And so, I don't see how that fits into, if you've done the research on the area. So, none of this development is designed for the people just south of the development?
The development is designed for anybody who wants to live into that area.
So, do you all know the median income of the people who live just south of that?
I can't give you that answer right now. I cannot.
I thought that would be a part of the vigorous, rigorous market research that you spoke of, though. She didn't have some idea.
We can give you that. I can come back to you with that. It'd be as simple as for me looking to the market package, but I do not have the information with me.
I know you guys are getting a nice grilling this evening, right? You know? I'm sure you're used to it. And I'm not trying to, I want development. I just want to make sure that there's a few things that are considered when that takes place.
Okay.
And I'm deeply concerned. I'm saying this for you all as much as I'm saying it for the public and the staff, that it seems as though, as much as we push for consideration of the neighborhoods, the historical impact, as well as who's going to be developing and doing the work and the projects, I don't feel like, I feel like the projects move ahead and we get this one opportunity to express ourselves, because once it starts rolling, the ball's rolling and it may not come before us again. So, as far as the development itself, do you all have minority participation goals on your projects when you do development?
We could have a construction team. Our construction team usually can speak more about that. And I believe you're talking MBE, WBE-type businesses. Our construction team would talk individually, could talk more about what they expect in each market. But yes, we do hire DBE, WB, and MBE companies when we do contract out and veteran companies as well.
Well, one of the things that I'm looking for as developers come, typically what happens is, they say, well, we'll look for, it depends on what the city or the other partner wants. So, if the city or the other partner doesn't have it, then you don't worry about it. I think you should. I think the developers should come to the table with a particular understanding that if there are any tax rebates or any, any sort of incentives that the developer gets, these tax dollars are coming from everyone who pays taxes. So, I think the city, as well as the developer, should have the, a notion or have a plan for minority participation in the development. So, as a part of the presentation, as a part of the work that you're going to do. So, especially when you're saying you want to build in, basically in the heart of the black community, but you don't have any thoughts about, you know, a particular goal or making it affordable for the individuals who live there. So, I'm deeply troubled by that. I want young professionals to have places to live, and I think that it's, I don't know what's going on with the land right now. It's been that way for a long time. It's been sitting there for a long time. The only entity that I knew, that I know of that ever even looked into it was Pilgrim, the other church. I think they wanted to buy some parcels of the land for expansion, and they were, for some reason, it didn't go through. So, I'm excited about the possibility of new development. But I want those to be not just contiguous in relationship to the layout or the colors of the townhomes, but also the people in the community, right? And I think that as you listen to people like Dr. Underwood, you heard her speak earlier, we have a development on Lincoln and University that just tore down a bunch of houses, and on just west of the tracks there, they tore down a bunch of houses in the African-American neighborhood, and now there's this back end. So, they, there is an enclosure or an enclo, encroaching upon the community that is of deep concern. So, that's why I'm voicing this right now, so I want to make it very clear. It's not all just for you guys. I just happen to have to talk to y'all because you're sitting there, but it's for everyone who's listening, right? So, but thank you for the presentation, and, but those are some things that I'm concerned about that I need answers for.
Sure. Thank you.
Any other questions? Yep, Jared?
So, I'm looking at your site map here, and I'm just curious about R2 Parcel, Site A and Site B, very large empty areas that are in between all of the homes. And you have that curve that would be the access that would be from the Fourth Street extension down into that drive that kind of comes into the heart of it, where there is no properties on that. You see?
Yes.
I pointed it out to you, but you understand where I'm, where I'm pointing out? Just curious as to why you, I mean, and you showed in those pictures that you had from the other developments that they're largely vacant lots. You guys don't fill those in with other things for people to use? I mean, it didn't seem like there was a lot of trees or anything else on there that were just kind of lawned.
So, the two open spaces that you're seeing on what would be Urbana are detention ponds? Largely going to be taken up by detention ponds? And are you talking about the area that's just east of the proposed Fourth Street extension?
Yep.
So, that will be land owned by the Church of the Living God?
And then, you, will you guys be paying for these road enhancements or the?
Correct.
Including the one that would be coming up, Carver?
Correct.
And this South, but oh, Brad?
Correct.
Dennis?
And is it, did I understand correctly that there would be sidewalks throughout the townhome areas?
Correct.
Besides detention ponds, do you plan to have playground?
That was something that came up at plan commission, and we are looking at our site plan right now.
And are you going to plant trees?
We do have a landscaping plan. I don't have that in front of me, but I can bring it next time.
I have just a couple of questions. I'm a little, I guess some of it could wait until the plat, but it sounds like that when we, by the time we get to the plat, we're going to have to say yes or no. So, I guess I'll just mention them. So, are all of those streets going to be dedicated, and would that be part of the final plat if we need to accept dedicated streets? At what point do we do that? That's, I guess, a question for staff.
So, the streets that are intended to be dedicated are the main East-West Street, so going from the circle on the west, connecting to Federal Drive. And then, the other one is, I'm not sure how to describe it, but one of the other north-south ones.
Fifth and Fourth?
It's Fifth Street.
Thank you.
Up to the roundabout.
So, anything that has, so everything that has the head-end parking is private streets, basically?
Correct. Parallel parking on public streets.
So, the public streets are expected to have parallel parking?
Correct.
And that's, okay, and that's part of the plan, huh? Okay.
And those are, to answer the rest of your previous question, those would be dedicated at the time of the final plat. That's when we take care of that level of detail.
Okay. And then, have you considered, I know some of the newer developments have the opportunity to plan ahead for the increased deliveries that are being made now by UPS and FedEx, and where the, where everybody parks so that they don't block people in while they're delivering packages, and so that they aren't blocking lines of sight and stuff like that? Do you take that into consideration when you do your plat, your layouts?
I have not thought about it yet, but I can certainly do that, yes.
Most of our deliveries are delivered to the clubhouse. We do have, like I said, a package area that, so in order to prevent issues like that, we just have them delivered to the clubhouse, and everybody has a dedicated, either a dedicated area to pick up packages, or they go to the front desk and can receive their packages, not only for reasons like that, but security reasons as well.
Are you referring to wanting a designated parking area for delivery vehicles?
Well, I've just noticed in some of the, some of the developments that are relatively new, but really before people started thinking much about it, it seems like I'm always running into problems with people getting blocked in by delivery trucks, or they're blocking access, sometimes blocking handicapped access to buildings, which is really bad.
We can certainly look into that.
Just encourage you to keep, to keep track of that. And then, as far as mass transit goes, do you have any plans for how that would work with our mass transit district, getting people to existing routes?
Beyond walking to an existing route at Fourth and Bradley, I have not had discussions with them. We will have property shuttles that we run as well, but they will not. But they will not make a dedicated stop at the bus stop.
Okay.
Mainly because we cannot take up the bus stop area with a private shuttle.
Okay. It's too bad you aren't looking at that parcel just to the east because that would go right along Goodwin, and we would jump at the chance to connect Goodwin to the north, I think. And that would be a great way for our buses to get up to the drive by the interstate and back down Lincoln. And it would solve a lot of problems if we could get around that way. But it's unfortunate that that's not part of this. Any other questions?
Aaron?
So, the...I was going to ask about the mass transit part because you mentioned it earlier. It's not 4th and Bradley. It's 5th and Bradley.
Okay.
The bus connects there, and then it goes east along Bradley to Row Mine.
Okay.
So, that's a good distance away.
So, I'm just thinking about when you all have a development like this. And Alex, you mentioned that you had one that was...that you sold about three years ago that you all held for 10 years?
Yes, in Savoy.
In Savoy?
Yes.
Now, Savoy, there's quite a bit of new development along that Dunlap and, you know, South Neil Street. So, that can be an attractive thing. But for this, as you do your due diligence on this, is there something that you know of that's going to be developed that's going to be more attractive for the young professionals that you're trying to attract here?
Are you speaking just in the area?
Yeah.
We weren't really focused on that. We were more focused on our residence would be a destination. And it's going to be a destination because of the amount of space you can get for the price, as well as other amenities that's not offered in the market right now. So, we were looking more at what we can do to make our spot...our location a destination versus the new development, retail centers and stuff like that in the area. Savoy, and I wasn't around when they developed that, but it was a little similar. And I know the retail areas weren't like that as great as it was, as it is now, back then. But again, it was more site-specific destination versus what's happening around the area on that Savoy project.
Okay.
Okay, Mary Alice?
Okay. I had a question for staff. I don't know if you have an answer for this, but just based on what you guys were saying in terms of shops and so forth, there is a vacant lot just to the east of...what are we calling these? Zone A? Plot A? I don't know what it's called. Site A? There we go. And I'm sure it's on this table, but I'm wondering if that's an opportunity to add in stores? I mean, in the future. I'm just thinking about...I think it's a good point that there really is no shopping there. There's no grocery stores. The closest grocery store is County Market on 4th and Springfield. So, I'm just wondering if we're trying to plan out in terms of this future land use? It's just vacant. Existing land use is vacant, right? Am I reading this correctly? The current zoning for Site A is R4, medium density, multiple family residents. So, that would have to be rezoned if there's going to be stores there.
Yes, correct. To the east.
Okay.
Yes, the parcel to the east is Zone R4, I think, yeah.
All right. So, are we in the discussion phase yet?
I think we're just about to discussion if there's no more questions.
Okay.
Okay. Oh, Dennis, did you have a question?
Okay. It's naturally a question, but I would request that you consider seriously doubling or tripling the buffer zone between the historic neighborhood and the new development. I think that it would provide a sense of security and that the neighborhood would appreciate having more of a visual buffer from this very large new complex. It's rather different than the traditional homes that they have.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
I had one more.
Okay. Jared?
I looked at a lot of Veritas developments and other places. And the stuff you guys have done in Ann Arbor and various places around town. Does Veritas take into consideration the effects of gentrification in its developments and where it want to choose its neighborhoods?
So, first of all, I'm just going to say we're Trinitas, and I do know Veritas is a different company, so I just want to make sure. Okay. I just want to make sure.
We haven't had to take into account much gentrification in the areas just because of the locations that we are in historically. I will say that me personally, when I'm looking into sites, that is something that I do consider just by myself. And I'm one of the two people that look at sites. So, gentrification is an issue that is there to us as well. But Trinitas as a whole, for the most part, most of our sites are really in areas that are already redeveloped or going to the development cycle. So, to answer your question, that's, I guess, that's a yes and a no. It's more market, less...it's more market search when we go into sites.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. I thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. We can begin discussion now. Do you...I suppose we might as well just keep discussing them all together, or should we do them one by one?
I think one by one.
One by one.
One by one? All right. Then, first, we'll just consider ordinance number 2018-09058, an ordinance approving an annexation agreement for that parcel number, which is on our map as Site B. Okay. Any discussion on the annexation agreement?
Bill?
Yep, Jared?
Lori, I got a question. I'm reading through this. You talked a little bit about the fiscal impacts, but obviously, the vast majority of the memo was dedicated to covering the eight points of the SAAL criteria, which we're not really considering in the annexation part of it, correct?
There is a rezoning component of the annexation because the underlying zoning is the county zoning of I-2, I believe it is. Therefore, if...so, the rule is in Urbana. If a county parcel does not automatically convert to the zoning that is desired, then a rezoning is put as part of the annexation agreement.
Okay. So, is that included in the 058 ordinance? Or is that the 060 part?
Yes, it is wrapped into the annexation agreement. So, one of the provisions of the annexation agreement assigns the zoning. I can get that paragraph here.
Because which comes first, the chicken or the egg? We annex it first, then we zone it, or we zone it, then we annex it?
So, the annexation agreement includes a provision that assigns the zoning. So, it's kind of one...the annexation agreement is one package.
And buried within is a zoning.
And then, the rezoning of Site A is a different package.
No, I got that.
And then, the annexation itself is the city saying, "Okay, that's our jurisdiction now."
Okay. So, which one is which in these considerations between 58, 59, and 60? That's what I'm trying to get at. So, we're staying correctly on topic.
So, ordinance 58 is the annexation agreement.
Of Site B.
For Site B, thank you. Included in that is a rezoning.
Okay. And what's the difference between that and 60?
60 is the annexation itself. So, that's at the point where basically that parcel becomes a part of the city of Urbana, and they start paying taxes to the city of Urbana, just to simplify it to the...
Okay.
So, the agreement is needed in order to assign the zoning. And then, the annexation itself, which is 60, is where we actually take it as part of our jurisdiction.
And whose...the agreement is between us and the county?
The agreement is between us and the property owners and developers. So, the land is privately owned. It's just the county is responsible for the codes and the regulations and the enforcement of that land until such point that we annex it. And that becomes our responsibility.
Okay.
Mary Alice?
Since Lori's here, don't leave. So, 58 and 60 are only with Site B, and 59 is Site A?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Bill, I'm sorry.
Okay, Jared?
Sorry, hold my mic. Can you just talk a little bit more about how we should be considering those costs that were put in the memo for the annexation with the additional fire and police use?
I'm going to ask Kevin to come up to address that as he did get the information from the various departments and put that together.
Okay.
Could you repeat the question?
Well, Bill obviously brought up a concern that I shared about those services being underestimated and the fiscal impact that they would cause. And obviously, our concern being, you know, if we're not getting our values worth out of the value of development and it costs the city more to have it there than it did not having it there, then I think that that's a consideration we can consider. Your thoughts?
Okay. So, for the fiscal impact analysis, what we do is we consult with the other departments, so Police, Fire, Public Works. And they help us produce reasonable estimates for how much a development might cost. As you can imagine, it's not an exact science, given that what we have to go on are different types of multifamily. So, in this case, let's take fire protection or police protection. We have a vast array of multifamily developments in town, and they can be very low when it comes to police calls, or they can be very, very high. So, in consultation with the Police Department, we look at all of these multifamily, you know, what is comparable to the development that we're looking at. And then, we have to come up with a reasonable estimate. The range in this case, when you look at the number of units that Trinitas is proposing, was anywhere from $1,500 per year for police to upwards of $13,000. So, we had to look at those developments, compare them to what's proposed here, and then come up with something reasonable. So, like I said, it's not an exact science. I will say that if a development is managed well, you can expect less police calls. So, we factored that in in this case, but I still think we are conservative when it comes to police calls. For fire protection, we got a range. It was not as extreme of a range, but it was between 7,000 and 7,500. So, we just split that down the middle and assumed that it was going to be 7250. Public Works, there would be no costs since there aren't, at this point, any public any public infrastructure that's involved in the development.
Won't there be, though, in the future, they will have to have sanitary sewer in the development?
That's all private. It's all going to be private.
It'll all be managed by them.
Correct.
Connected to ours at some point.
Connected to UCSD sewers, yeah. But all the sewers are going to be private. I imagine at some point, decades down the line with those streets that are dedicated, we would have to take over maintenance of those. But they will be built to a high standard from the get-go.
And they'll be responsible for plowing and keeping those streets clear for the residents?
For the public streets, that would be the responsibility of Champaign and Urbana in cases where there's...where it's on the border. And Bill could probably speak to this better than I can. But we do come up with agreements with the Public Works Department in Champaign to decide who's going to, you know, who's going to plow. So, it's probably either Champaign or Urbana for the public portions.
Because there is the one east-west road that will cross lines from Champaign into Urbana?
Correct.
Okay.
And I don't think the plows are going to stop right at the border.
Okay. I'll let others talk.
Mary Alice?
I just like jumping off of whatever Jared says. So, you said that 7200 would be for the fire? Does that mean that you're estimating 6,000 for the police? Because in the memo, it says from 10,000 to 13,000 for both.
Yeah. So, and I don't have the complete table in front of me, but like I said, the range for police calls was somewhere from around 1,500 per year to about 13,000. But anything over 10,000 was, you know, extremely poorly managed properties that have a lot of police calls. So, yeah, whatever the difference was, so 6,000, five...yeah, 5,000, 6,000 at most, yeah.
It would seem to me like it would be more expensive for the police than it would be for the fire department because hopefully, there not going to be a lot of fires.
But if there's one, they have to send, you know, send a lot of fire trucks and...
There are a lot of non-fire fire calls too, a lot of medical calls and things like that.
Yeah, yeah. Good point. Good point.
Aaron, did you?
Yeah, that was one of the points that I was going to...was something I wanted to ask. With the development being basically annexation would be ours to the north of Champaign, and our fire department, the closest one, would be on Lincoln. And I thought there was something about we wanted all of our fire departments to be able to reach a destination within a particular timeframe. So, how does that work for the northern, northwestern portion of this development when the closest fire department is now...is the one on Lincoln Avenue?
That I do not know.
Mayor Marley?
Well, I can't answer specifically in terms of minutes, but the Urbana Fire Department serves the area just north of there as well. And some of those properties are in the county, some are in Urbana. So, our fire service goes north of where this development is.
Yeah, but that...you can take Lincoln Avenue to get to those places. Now, you're saying you're going to...you have to go through Carver Street? Through Carver Park down that street into the development and get to the area? And then, I'm just trying to understand. It seems that that's going to be a rather difficult process, or certainly is not going to be easy getting to that area.
It's one of the things they plan out as the development proceeds.
I thought it would be something you would figure out before you start building.
So, members of the fire department were involved. There was a multi-jurisdictional meeting several weeks ago with Champaign staff, as well as Urbana staff. And members of the fire department were there. They have been involved in the process in reviewing the site plan. So, they are, well, I would believe comfortable because we have not heard any negative comments, other than be sure that there's enough access. So, we have been showing this site plan to them, and we have not heard any negative feedback. They believe that they can adequately serve this development.
Any discussion? If not, what's your wishes with the first one, the annexation agreement? We noted that they do need to provide Exhibit C before our next meeting. So, is there a motion to forward it or keep it in committee or forward it with no recommendation?
I'll make a motion that we forward it to the full council with no recommendation.
I'll second that.
Okay. Been moved by Jared and seconded by Mary Alice to forward ordinance number 2018-09058, ordinance approving annexation agreement to City Council with no recommendation. Aaron?
I would like to make an unfriendly amendment. And I would like to keep it in committee until the other two colleagues are here as well and to flush out any of these concerns. I don't feel like...I think when we get it to council, there's an urge to finalize something and move it forward. And I think there's more to flush out here, based upon all the questions and concerns that I've heard. So, I would make an unfriendly amendment that we keep it in... make an unfriendly amendment that we keep it in committee.
We have a motion on the floor, so I think the way to do that would be to vote no on this motion and then make a new motion.
Or can I accept his amendment? If it's unfriendly, I guess not.
Yeah. Jim?
The way to handle it, assuming that Alder Person Hammond's unfriendly amendment is cast in the form of a motion, as you would vote, that needs a second to be considered and if it's second, then you would vote on the amendment. And that would effectively kill the primary motion.
So there's been a motion to amend, the motion to keep it in committee instead of send it to City Council with a recommendation. Is there a second to that motion? And anyone who made a motion could still second this motion.
[laughing] I mean, I see what you're saying. I think we probably should let Dean and Eric have a chance to talk about it. Staff, I think, brought this to us with some sense of urgency. Or is, do we have time?
Is this a second?
It will be a second depending on if this has to happen tonight or if we can wait to let Dean and Eric be a part. I'm not seeing, I'm not seeing a no, so...
I'd suggest either second this one or not.
I'll second it.
Okay, so there's been an amendment and a second, so now we can have discussion on that. Is there a question for staff? Jim?
I would amend my comment. If this is effectively a motion to defer, i.e. to keep it in committee, all you need is a motion and a second. Two council people can ask.
I think that's only at City Council meetings, not in committee or the whole, is that right, Charlie? Okay. So I think there's a question for staff from Jared, right?
Or the developers about timing.
Timing.
We're considering voting on sitting this until our two council members can join us two weeks from now.
So the only thing I can say is we will be taking this to City Council in Champaign on Tuesday of next week. Obviously, sooner is better for us, but I'm sure you know that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion on the amended version, amendment to make the original motion to hold it in committee? Ready to vote on that? Okay, all in favor of the amendment to hold it, to make it so we would hold it in committee, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries, so now the original motion is to send it to, is to keep the ordinance in committee until, so we would reconsider again in two weeks. Any discussion on that?
Can we pull that, since we just voted on the other one?
Yeah.
So now we're on the original motion.
The original motion has been amended.
It's been amended.
Okay, I got you.
So now the motion is to keep it in committee.
Yep.
Okay, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
That motion, oh, any opposed? That motion carries, so that, the annexation agreement will be kept in committee. Next is Ordinance Number Twenty Eighteen Oh Nine Oh Five Nine, to amend the zoning map for the one parcel that's completely in Urbana that is Site A. Is there any, is there a motion on that? Mary Alice.
I'll move that we keep this in committee.
Keep the rezoning in committee as well? Is there a second?
Yeah, it seems to me to...
Yeah, if we're gonna do one, we oughta do them all. I'll second that motion, keep it in committee.
Been moved by Mary Alice and seconded by Jared to keep that ordinance in committee. Is there any discussion on that? Mary Alice?
You know, I just wanted to communicate a couple of things to the, to the proposed buyers and developers. A, I think that some of these items in terms of promoting landfill, I think is good here. I think my major concern here is the LaSalle criteria number, tell you, just a second. I think it's number five, which is safety. Sorry, three, number three, the LaSalle criteria, and my concern is the residents, the single-family residents that are just south of this, and if there's any way that we can mitigate the impact on that community, whether it's buffering, whether it's something to do, I don't know what to do about the Carver Drive. I do think that there's gonna be an impact in terms of the traffic, but I'm just, I'm trying to communicate. I do like a lot of what you guys are presenting. That's my major concern, so that's why I would like to vote to keep it in committee, because I'd like to hear. They want to ask a question, is that allowed?
Oh, sure. Could you, could you come to the microphone, please? Sometimes we watch these later and it's, the most disturbing thing ever is to be watching a meeting for an hour and then not be able to hear somebody.
So we did complete a traffic impact analysis that will show what's expected on Carver Drive, if you want to take a look at that.
That would be great if you could provide that.
I know that staff has that.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Jared?
I have a question for Kevin or Lori on LaSalle criteria number five and the subject of suitability of the subject property for zone purposes, and I guess I'm, we've learned a lot over, I have learned a lot over the time that I've been on council about these considerations, but Kevin, if you or Lori could just expand for me a little bit about how I concern myself with the word suitability, because that could go a lot of different ways, I guess, and you probably know better than I do what I really should be considering when I'm looking at that.
Well, I don't know that I know better than you do, but I'll, I mean, my interpretation of suitability is, does this site make sense for multifamily residential uses? I think my interpretation of that is you have single-family homes to the south and some townhouses to the south. The proposed development is duplexes on the south part of the site with higher-density townhomes on the northern part of the site, which would be closer to the industrial area, so I think it's quite suitable. That's just my interpretation.
Okay.
Okay, and, yeah, I just had a brief question too, I guess. I know you asked us to vote this up or down, but really, since the general area plan is part of the annexation agreement, should we be considering that as a condition of the annexation that they have to build to that plan? Because our four could actually be a lot more dense than what they've presented if we rezone it and annex it, but this exhibit is in there saying that they're gonna build it to that plan. Does that hold them to that?
Well, I'm not terribly familiar with general area plans. I've only seen a few of them in my time here, so I don't know how much detail they go into. I think usually it just lays out, like, here's where the streets are gonna go and here's where some buildings are gonna go. I don't think it actually gets into the detail, like, here's where a five-story apartment building's gonna go. It is pretty general from my, my understanding.
Okay, thanks. Jared?
So on that very south end at the connection to Fifth Street, they're not per se gonna actually build those homes and remove those trees that are behind the townhomes that are already there, because the way it's laid out, it looks like they're building them right into that tree line.
Without seeing more detail, I don't know. Again, things like that are dealt with sort of later on in the, in the site planning process, and when we're talking about rezonings, we're really just zoning, we're really just looking at the use and not specifics of the site plan.
I got you.
Okay, are we ready to vote on holding the second ordinance in committee?
Yep.
Okay, so all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. Next is Ordinance Number Twenty Eighteen Zero Nine Zero Six Zero, Ordinance Annex in Certain Territory to the City of Urbana, so this is the actual annexation. Is there a motion on that?
I'll move that we hold in committee.
I'll second that.
Moved by Jared, seconded by Mary Alice to hold the third ordinance, Twenty Eighteen Oh Nine Oh Six Oh, in committee. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. All three ordinance would be held in committee for two weeks. Next is Resolution, thank you very much.
Bill, just quickly, to the developers, just quickly, to your left, my right, Dr. Underwood, Eldridge Carr, individuals who are impacted by this, who obviously didn't attend or didn't have, either didn't get the information, didn't understand what was going on. I believe if you reach out to, for instance, the alderpersons, whether it's Ms. Foreman in CC One, who represents CC One there, or myself in Ward Three, I would have certainly made sure that individuals who were going to be impacted by that would have been there, and I don't know if there's a process that's...
You were notified.
If I had heard directly from you, for whatever reason, I didn't get it, I didn't see it, so, because I would have attended or I certainly could have shared that information with someone else. I just think that if there was a direct reach out to me or I didn't get it, or I would have certainly made sure that I asked other people to be there.
Mayor Marlin?
All City Council members were notified of the two informational meetings. I know I attended one, I think. Did you come to one?
Not for this one.
Okay, but yes, both, both information meetings were shared with City Council members.
And we'll be sure to ask Eric and Dean to watch the meeting so that they're familiar with the issues and we don't have to repeat a lot of information, hopefully. Thank you. Okay, next we have Resolution Number Twenty Eighteen Zero Nine Zero Four One R, Resolution Approving an Agreement with the Illinois Department of Transportation, University Avenue Improvement. Public Works, Bill Gray.
Good evening. What we have before you is a City IDOT agreement for city share of some improvements along the University Avenue corridor, and let me just go into a little bit of background on this particular project. This probably starts about five years ago after we've had some unfortunate fatalities along University Avenue. I think there's been about seven over the last eight, 10 years, and we've reached out to council, expressed very serious concerns about the safety. Staff reached out to IDOT. IDOT did a road safety analysis or audit study. After that, they came up with a variety of recommendations. Actually, they made a presentation to City Council after their study was completed and they went into the design mode and also identified funds. Now, this is where the state has come up with safety funds to do this improvement. Improvement is about eight-point-six million dollars and it's 100% funded with highway safety improvement money from the state. We have been working with them through their preliminary design and design to lesser degree, interacting a little bit with easements that are needed, but the project as a whole, to go over, some of the specific details include widened sidewalks on both sides of the street, eight-foot wide, and most places, some areas, the building footprint is too close to make it that wide, but for the most part, it's a wide sidewalk. They're going to replace all the street lighting that's there with newer LED lighting that's gonna have a better uniform light level to see the entire width of the street and the sidewalks along there. When you drive along certain areas, there's some areas that are more tougher to see and some of these crashes, of course, have occurred at night, including at least one of the fatalities. There's gonna be all new traffic signal equipment, so existing signals from Wright Street to Maple, Five Points, will be all replaced. Some of the features with the signal equipment is they're gonna have heads over the center of the driving lane. That's kind of a new criteria that federal highway has recommended, so it's easier for the driver to see where that signal head is, and also it's gonna have a yellow backplate which lights up at night, so it really stands out, so the driver can see what that black plate will look like. There's also gonna be the introduction in our district for left-turn lanes. Usually you give a red ball and a green arrow. After that green arrow, you're gonna have a caution yellow flashing arrow that just, again, alerts the driver to use caution, make sure it's clear before you turn left in those circumstances. That's kind of a new feature that'll be used. The striping will be very prominent for pedestrian crossings. They'll all have the pedestrian countdown seconds for crossing, you know, when you cross the street, because it's a five-lane cross-section, so this is a big, wide area. So there's probably a few things missing, but for the most, there will be some tree removal, but there'll be some tree planting involved. If you drive along there, you'll see some trees that have hunks of tree or bark missing, whatever. Some of those trees are just so close to the back of curb, we're gonna be removed, because quite frankly, they're unsafe and those are obstacles, but there will be tree replacements involved with this project too. One feature, though, that we identified in their design was the streetlight poles themselves and in particular, the color of the poles. Campus Town, the campus itself, University Campus, Champaign, Urbana, the university many years ago came up with certain criteria for the lighting, which would be more or less light lighting or LED lighting. Prior to LED was metal halide, which was a wider lighting than the yellowish, orangish, high-pressure sodium lighting on campus, was the poles would be powder-coated, black powder-coated. Downtown, we also have black powder-coated poles too, so this is an important corridor for us. It starts at the west end of campus by Beckman Institute at Wright Street and it goes all the way to Maple Avenue where the new Domino's Pizza's being built there, so it ties in our downtown lighting with our campus, university campus lighting. What IDOT said is, you know, this is a safety improvement, we're funding 100% of this cost, but if you want to do an upgrade to what the pole looks like, and this is not only the streetlight poles, but it's the combination traffic signal poles, it's the posts that hold just the head, signal head itself, and then all the push buttons, and there's like almost 200 of these poles and posts along this highway, believe it or not, it adds up in a mile and a half period of time, so. So the agreement is before you. I have to let you know that there's reference twice to a city west of us that should have been us, Urbana, so I will have the final corrected version of the agreement and the wherances and in one of the therefore's that references Champaign. It should be Urbana. I didn't catch that in time, apologize for that. And then also in Appendix A, and it'd be easier if I just read the last paragraph in Appendix A, where it talks about, "Be it further resolved that the city agrees to pass a supplemental resolution to provide necessary funds for its share of the cost of these." It says repairs, appropriate where it should be improvements, if the amount appropriated here improves to be sufficient to cover the said cost. Just to talk about that a little bit, IDOT is historically conservative in their estimates of costs. I've not been aware, of course, as soon as I say this, it will happen, but we've never gone back for more money on their improvements. Usually, it's less, the costs are less, but on the other, on the same token, what they're saying is they're asking for $210,000, I'm rounding up now to $210,000 is our share to do these black powder-coated poles and posts, but if the bid price comes in over that, what they're saying is that we would then provide the extra dollars to do that. In the unlikely circumstance that that happens, we would know the price right at the bid opening, when they're awarding a contract, and speaking with one IDOT engineer, there's a possibility that we could either not do some of the posts or whatever, or some of the locations, to keep it within budget, or we could talk about the extra dollars if there's a change order in the costs, but we would have that opportunity, at least have that discussion with you, with the mayor, with the city administrator, to see what we'd like to do, so if it's a wild number, wildly high, then we may just go back to some other plan of not doing the black powder coat, but I'm reasonably confident that they're coming up with a very conservative number to pay for the extra costs for that, rather than just have that spun aluminum grayish color, you know, looking pole. Now, I want to make it clear that historically on IDOT projects, the local agency, the local public agency typically pays 100% of the sidewalk costs, typically pays 100% of the street lighting costs, typically cost shares with traffic... traffic signals. So, for example, picture Broadway Avenue and University Avenue. Well, University Avenue is an IDOT road, and Broadway Avenue is a City of Urbana street. We would usually pay 50% of that cost of the signal installations. Okay, it's something like that. If you look at this project, those costs for sidewalk, for traffic signals, and for lighting is around $4 million. Our contribution to that is zero. I mean, this is an amazing thing for us. And one other thing I want to mention is, some of you weren't on council at the time, but in 2010, we did do a corridor study. Now, Regional Plan Commission staff did this study. Granted, there's a lot of streetscape components in here, too. This is not a streetscape project now. See, that's fast, three times. But it does talk about the lighting, which we want to, you know, recommend the black poles and, and other features such as wide sidewalks. But we don't get into other things like concrete planters or benches or receptacles or even stone features that talk about in here. That's maybe for another day, another time. But that's not part of this project. It doesn't mean, this doesn't preclude that from happening, but that's not what this project's about. It's to be, make the roadway more safe, to try to reduce crashes, fatalities. And as far as engineering is concerned, this is some of the best techniques and practices being used that IDOT is employing here that have been proven to reduce crashes. So, yes, this is a chunk of money we're being asked to pay. Staff feels that it's appropriate and based on, this is kind of the north end of our downtown. This is the north end of campus. It goes through two hospital zones. We feel that this will be a nice touch for the look we're looking for along University Avenue. But admittedly, it's, it's black powder coat paint on all these posts and poles. So we have money budgeted. The fiscal impact talks about transferring some money to cover this University Avenue safety improvements. But there is money currently in the budget. It's just a transfer is what we would do if you approve. Questions?
Okay, any questions for Bill? Dennis?
Bill, was there once a consideration of having a safety island in the middle of university where there's high student crossing? Some, many times not at a corner where there's a lighting signal, such as we know, we've seen on Windsor Road at Meadowbrook Park, for example?
The width of the street doesn't allow for a safety island. The middle or two-way left turn lane is just that. It's there for the intersections where the crossings, pad crossings occur with the signals also accommodate the left turn crossings. So there just isn't space to do that, to widen the road even further to put that pedestrian refuge center median island. Did we discuss it? Yes. Did we ask, are there any opportunities for it? Yes. Can they do it? No. There just isn't space for that.
Any other questions? Mary Alice?
I have three. Hopefully, they're fast. Number one, is the, did they, we had talked about perhaps them changing it to 30 miles an hour instead of 35.
Oh, yes. That did, that is going to happen.
That is going to happen.
Yeah, I'm sorry. That isn't what IDOT agreement's about. But no, they are going to reduce the speed from 35 to 30 mile per hour.
Okay. And then the second piece is with the budget. So it's going to cost approximately $210,000. So you're, you're mentioning that we would have to do a future budget amendment of $60,000 from the pavement and maintenance fund?
Yes.
What is the pavement and maintenance fund? I assume that's like potholes and stuff. What is that?
Correct.
So we're moving money from fixing?
Other aspects of our streets, yes. That's the, that's the trade-off in doing this.
And where is the rest of the money coming from? If we're only budgeting $60,000, right?
There's $150,000 currently budgeted in the University Avenue Safety Improvements.
Oh, I understand.
I'm sorry, yeah.
Okay. All right, so we already have $150,000?
Correct.
For this particular project?
Plus 60.
Plus the 60 if we agree to move the 60.
Right.
All right, last but not least, if I go to the page where it has the costs?
Yes.
Can you just tell me what the P and C engineering 15% means?
Yeah, that's engineering and construction fees. So they want to recover their preliminary engineering and design fees and construction oversight for projects. So that's actually a low percentage in the world of engineering fees, whether it's for preliminary design, design, or construction observation. Many times, it's easily 25% or higher.
So that's the state's giving the 27K. So we're definitely not getting a discount on that one.
We're not going to get a discount on that. But that pays for their time and/or their consultant times.
I was just curious.
Yes, yeah, no. No, we have to pay them.
Okay.
Jared?
I'd like to make a motion that we, resolution. I'd like to make a motion that we send resolution number 2018-09-041R, resolution approving agree with the Illinois Department of Transportation for University and Avenue Improvements forward to the full council with recommendation for approval.
I'll second that. It's moved by Jared and seconded by Dennis to send the resolution to council with recommendation for approval. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. Next is ordinance number 2018-09-061, an ordinance approving a license agreement with Stevens Building LLC, parking lot 11. Brad Bennett?
Thank you. Appreciate being able to present this to you this evening. The Stevens Building at 218 West Main includes four residential apartments. And they had recently approached the, the city about finding a space to locate their recycling totes and their garbage containers. If you're familiar with the downtown area, there isn't a lot of space available. And this particular building has a, you know, limitation of butting up against Goose Alley and Main Street and have buildings on either side of it. So Public Works did take a look. They were looking at wanting to locate it in parking lot 11. We worked with them to find a appropriate space for it. And what you've got before you is a license agreement that would allow them to locate their recycling totes and containers in a landscape portion of city parking lot 11. The Stevens Building Group would have to provide a concrete pad to locate the totes and dumpsters on, as well as an enclosure screen, you know, to hide that. So we're looking at, because it is city property, we would charge them for the use of it. It's a relatively small area, about 33 square feet, which amounts, I think, $20 or $28.05 annual fee that we would collect from them. But Stevens Building is interested in, in pursuing the license agreement. They've actually executed and signed their portion of it. So we're presenting it to you here this evening. That's kind of everything in a quick summary. I'll, I'll open up to questions at this point.
Any questions for Brad? Mary Alice?
I'm curious how you came up with the $28.05.
It's based on, we calculate what the square footage is of the occupation, and I think it's multiplied by 85 cents a square foot. And that, that's an annual fee, so they pay that every year, and then it's adjusted for inflation.
And this is a 20-year agreement, so they're going to end up paying $561 for 20 years?
Correct.
Plus inflation.
Plus inflation. But this is, this is locked in, $28.05?
No, it, I, I think the way it's written is.
Oh, gotcha.
It can be adjusted by the Consumer Price Index.
And I, I will confess, I did not read through all of the details in terms of the lease. So I'm curious if you can tell me, what about cleanup? I mean, we're talking about recycling and garbage, if there's a mess.
Yeah, there's, do the two key provisions included in license agreement that they're responsible for, you know, keeping up the general cleanliness and maintenance of the facilities. So they can't, you know, have any sort of nuisance, you know, from trash spilling out or piling over. The other thing, too, is because it's being located adjacent to a handicap parking spot access aisle, they're responsible for making sure that that gate stays closed and doesn't interfere, you know, with the handicap parking space aisle.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we send ordinance number 2018-09-061, an ordinance approving a license agreement with the Stevens Building LLC for their trash cans forward to the full council with a recommendation for approval.
Second.
It moved by Jared and seconded by Aaron. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further business, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much.